To order the meeting of the Arlington Select Board for Wednesday, May 26, 2021. As a preliminary matter, this is the Select Board Chair Steve Decourcy. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
John Heard?
Yes.
Len Diggins?
Yes.
Eric Helmut?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Chapdeline?
Yes, sorry.
Doug Time?
Yes.
And Board Administrator Ashley Maher is participating remotely. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, which encourages and allows open meetings of state agencies and local governments to be conducted remotely in order to mitigate transmission of COVID-19 virus. The governor's order, which you can find posted with Agenda Materials on the town's website for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Before we begin, permit me to offer a few notes. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, is being recorded, and is also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that they may be visible to others and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Further, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted Agenda Materials also found on the town's website using the Novus Agenda Platform. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. I'll now turn to the first item on the agenda, which is item two for approval. Arlington Soapbox Derby Local Race, June 12, 2021. Joseph Barr, Race Director. Is Mr. Barr with us?
All right, he should be joining us right now.
Good evening, Mr. Barr.
Good evening. Sorry, I was just going through the Zoom restart.
Oh, no problem. Yeah, so we have the the cover letter that you sent, but if you could tell us a little bit about the event before we have questions and a vote?
Sure. So first of all, thank you, Select Board members, for considering our application and thank you to town staff for their help so far in all the requests and particularly in the midst of COVID, being flexible even prior to the recent announcement of relaxation of the requirements in helping us move forward with this. And I also apologize if you have any trouble with hearing me because my internet is telling me it's unstable. It normally does. So in any case, the Arlington Soapbox Derby is an event that's been happening on Eastern Avenue between the Bracket School and Robbins Farm Park for over a dozen years, other than last year canceled the race due to COVID. I will mention that the town manager had actually expressed a willingness to try to work with us last year to try to host the race, but in the end, the world championships in Akron were canceled. In any case, so we decided there really wasn't much point in us trying to run a race if the winners weren't going to be able to move on to the world championships, but I do want to say that I appreciate the town manager for being willing to entertain that conversation in the midst of a global. So I just wanted to mention that. But in any case, you know, the Soapbox Derby has been around since the mid 1930s. It's a gravity-powered racing that is enjoyed by kids between the age of seven and, well, 21. Shouldn't call them kids when they're 21, but you know, students in those age ranges who, you know, race down the hill, you know, again, in Arlington, along Eastern Avenue. And the winner in each of the three divisions gets to go to the world championships in Akron, Ohio in July. My son was the winner of his division in 2020. He is also in the chat or in the, sorry, in the participant in this, listening in. We have perhaps have a couple of other board members who are who are listening in as well. So it's a great fun event. I think, you know, it's very, you know, obviously kid-focused. And one of the things I'll say I love about Soapbox Derby is it's an opportunity for parents and to do a sport or an activity like this together because we wind up spending a lot of time both building the car and racing the car. It's a great STEM activity. It allows kids to build not just, you know, sort of the STEM knowledge, but also get a hand in tuning their car as well as having the fun experience of racing it both here and potentially in Akron. So, you know, I won't go on too much at length. I could so and filibuster on Soapbox Derby all day long, but it's a it's a great event. Like I said, I think it's been pretty popular in the town. We've met with DPW staff as well as staff from the police department. And, you know, they've kind of, the plan is pretty well set from previous years. And so they see no issues with doing it this year. Again, prior to the announcement from the governor about relaxing emergency requirements, we had also spoken directly or emailed directly with the health department and they had COVID protocols are in place at the time. And with the event happening this year, despite the fact that those emergency restrictions are being lifted, emergency will be, I mean, it'll still technically be in effect on the date of the race. We still do in people to, you know, physically distance as much as possible. You know, if people want to wear masks, we'll obviously encourage that as well. We'll have hand sanitizer or et cetera. So we do want to still retain, you know, a commitment to keeping the race as safe as possible. But obviously, we don't have to strictly comply as we would have prior to, I guess, this Saturday. I guess the only other thing I would mention is that last night, the Parks and Recreation Commission listened to for the park fact that we have people setting up along the edge of Rob Race and they they approved that permit, obviously, subject to the Select Board acting favorably on this request as well. So with that, I'll quit talking and happy to answer any questions or or expand on anything I just said. But obviously, again, thank you for hearing our request and hopefully you'll act favorably on it this evening.
All right, I will turn it over to the board now for questions and comments. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move
Great. Mr. Heard?
Thank you. I'll second that. I always like when this one comes before us. It's an exciting event in town. What's the age restriction or the age range for participants?
So kids as young as seven can participate. And technically, although we don't have anyone currently racing who's that old, it goes all the way up to 21. I'll just say there's three different divisions designed for different, you know, ages and abilities. So, you know, the younger kids are in a smaller and simpler car. And then the older kids are in a so-called master's car where they're actually almost invisible because they're the only thing that you can see is their helmet and the tiny little bit. It's a it's a pretty broad age range that can participate.
Is registration still open for it?
Yep. Yep. We'll be, our inspection day is Tuesday, sorry, Thursday, June 10 at the Myrac Auto Dealership, which has always been a strong supporter of Soapbox Derby since we started the group. We can really pretty much, people who were interested up until then, and we do have some cars available to rent. So people don't have to build a car from scratch or order a car. We can, we can help them out by providing them with a car to race in.
I do have a seven-year-old dear daredevil, so maybe I'll dip my toe in the water to see if I can build a box myself this year.
We'd love to have him. And I think, you know, I think in the letter is my, I believe I put my you, if you want to reach out to me or our website is ArlingtonSoapBoxDerby.org. Be either way you can find us and we're happy, happy to work with you to get a car going.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be happy to support this. What are the hours?
So in terms of the street closure itself, it's from about 6:00 AM in the morning until 5:00 PM, just to give us time to get everything set up, run the race and then get everything cleaned up. The actual race itself usually starts around 9:00 or 9:30, depending on how organized or disorganized we are in getting things rolling. I'll just mention, I should have said this earlier, that we also distribute notices to all the butters on Eastern Ave in this area and on the side streets, just so they know it's coming because obviously we can't have any cars parked on the street that day. And generally, we've not received any issues or complaints from those butters.
So 9:30 till when?
Till usually wraps up around 3:00. Depends on, you know, the racing is sort of a little bit unpredictable. But it's usually, like I say, 3:00 or 3:30 is usually when we're doing our awards, our trophy ceremony at the end.
That sounds like a really cool event. I mean, I have this idea of a documentary slash mockumentary. The opening shot is you have a tight shot on Boston because it's a great view of Boston from Eastern Ave. We zoom out, see that it's Arlington, and then you dissolve to a shot of the of the racers queued up and then into the history of that. So basically, my producer and me, go ahead.
Mason, I want to stop by. We're always happy to have, you know, coverage.
Yeah, cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut.
Thank you. I'm also happy to support this. I have two connections to this event. One is that I lived in Akron, Ohio for eight years, so I was well aware of that before moving to the Boston area a long time ago. And I also live down the street, so it's at the end of my street has been. And I will verify that with Mr. Barr that the the treatment of butters, traffic control has been exemplary in the 14 years I've lived a couple of blocks from there. It always just occurred to me, and now I have a chance to say it, you know, the the car skews a lot faster if you start at the very top of the hill by the water tower.
That's a joke.
No, it's 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 great and look forward to that. And and Mr. Heard, if you if you decide to enter, I'll bring you lemonade down from the house.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut.
None for me, though?
Okay, fine, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. And I also support my colleagues. This is a great event and hopefully we get good weather. I see that you you have a rain date of Sunday. Hopefully, you don't need to to do that. So on a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Heard for approval, Attorney Hime?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Your helmet?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Decourcy?
Yeah.
You men, as well?
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Barr, and good luck with the event.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the support and obviously encourage you all to come out and watch on June 12.
Great. All right. Item number three, request annual Greek festival, June 11, 2021 through June 13, 2021. Stefano Baboulis, Parish Council President, St. Athanasius, the Great Church. And there's three requests here. A three-day beer and wine license, a one-way designation of Appleton Place from Mass Ave to Burton Street, and act-in-place street closing. Is Mr. Baboulis with us this evening?
Yes, I just I've just promoted him. He should be coming into the meeting.
Okay, we're here. I'm here.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Baboulis. So we have the permit application. We have the cover letter, but if you want to tell us a little bit about the event and then I'll open it up to questions from the board.
So the, you know, the Greek festival has been happening down for the last 30, 35 years. It's an annual event. I would do serving Greek food, providing music. But it's basically a cultural event for us and for the town. Last year, we didn't really have the opportunity to do the COVID. We'd like to start the event again and, you know, we're waiting for your approvals.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm here with Father Bob Arcon. He's joining us. He's listening in, our new priest. Dini Agamides, our chairman of the event, his brother Chris Agamides, who is the safe person. Elia Badihias, who is the community contact person. And my son Michael, who is one of the people working, one of the lead people in the event.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to the board for questions or comments. Mr. Heard?
First of all, I'd like to move approval and thank you for bringing this forward. I know my in-laws live right in that little area and they love when this event comes to town. It's always fun to to go and get get some great food, listen to some great music and get to talk to great people. And the kids certainly appreciate everything that you do for the kids there as well. We did have a note from the Board of Health. It looked like their one concern was that the person that was generally in charge of the food had resigned. And I see you have Chris, that Yakimides, who's with you. And they noted that it was their understanding that Chris would be overseeing the food preparation, the entire event. Is that correct? Okay.
Chris has, you know, from his credentials, you know, he's graduate of Newbury College. Chris is here casting for himself.
How are you?
Hi, good to see you. Yeah, no problem. We certainly saw your credentials and we know that you're you're very well credentialed to oversee the event. I just want to make sure that you'd be there and be on site, make sure that everyone's complying. Yep.
Yes, I'll be here throughout the whole event. I've been involved from this since I was a kid. Obviously, the traditions of you, you folks seeing your families and visiting, and we appreciate all of that and welcome everybody there. But yeah, it's it's kind of an opportunity for us to come in. Nicholas is still very much a part of the church and the parish, and he's just kind of had an overwhelming year and just taking a little bit of a break. So we're stepping in for him and obviously he's got big shoes to fill. But we will do the very best we can to get it all set to go and represent it like we do every year.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question to Mr. Chair, to Mr. Baboulis. So how do you how do you handle complaints from the neighbors regarding noise?
So we'll have a contact question here. Elia, who, you know, the event is actually, this year is going to be from 11 to 9. The previous year was 11 to 10. But I mean, we have a good working relationship, neighborly relationship with the tenants. I mean, throughout the neighbors, throughout the year, the people across, you know, from our parking lot, they allow, we issue stickers to them. They park in our property. So some of them actually volunteer and work in our festival. So the relationship is very good. We never had an issue. I know it's one person sometimes complains, but other than that, it has been, you know, very, very successful relationship.
And so with the one that did, so with the one that did complain, how have you handled that one?
I mean, again, we're not doing anything out of the ordinary, you know. Address and support him, you know, if he has any concerns, we address it, but usually, you know, it's not, it's not, nothing major.
Yeah, I hear you. Well, I mean, I look, we live in an area that's relatively dense regardless of how you, what you want to call it, you know, and and I feel that there is a certain amount of of sound, audio that you have to deal with when you're in an area, I mean, distant speed. And I respect that and I appreciate that. And and I and and I expect it myself. But as it is for a resident who has to be prepared to accept a certain amount of sound, we, we, those of us who are producing that sound have to really be conscientious about the fact that we, I'm just going to finish what I'm going to say. We have to be conscientious about the how someone who is being exposed to prolonged and repetitive sound, especially over three days, is going to feel about that. So it's easy for me to put myself in the shoes of someone who has to listen to a lot of sound. And so so this isn't like something that has to happen. It is something that has happened for a long time, but it's not something that has to happen. And to the extent it is one person, it may just be one person who is brave enough to speak out about it. And I'm very conscientious and I take those kinds of issues to heart. So so I would say if someone does complain, we try to really feel for them. And sometimes we just go the extra mile. And I tell you, I think I were really bothered by sound for three days. If I got some good Greek food, it might go a little ways to make you feel a little better about it.
We do. We do.
Yeah, all right.
We've done that all the time. I mean, we, you know, we actually give them, issue food to them. And basically, together, we're not going to have a live, live band. We'll be a DJ and basically, you know, the size, size of our tent, it's only half the size of what we used to do. So it's a scaled-down event this year because we don't know what the response that we get from, you know, from from the people of Arlington, how, you know, how many people come out and support us. So we are being, you know, cautiously optimistic.
Good. All right. Well, thank you. Thanks for the questions.
You know, obviously, we'll address any concerns the tenants, the neighbors have.
All right, cool. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, I'm glad that we were able to to make the event happen this year. It's a positive event for the community and for your community. So we certainly want to help that to be successful. And I have one observation just about a discrepancy. I think that I had heard before that the plans were this to go to 9 o'clock. And you just mentioned that yourself, Mr. Chair. I just, or maybe this is a question for the town manager through the chair. But I noticed that the special permit actually had the hours to 10 o'clock instead.
Yeah, just to be able to clean up at the end. I mean, the event is technically over by 9:00, but obviously we'll have some cleanup after that, prepare for the next day. There will be no music after 9:00 o'clock or anything like that. So we just left it at 10:00, just because, you know, if we are out and we cleaning up or getting ready, you know, cleaning the
So, Mr. Chair, is that is that the the correct way to note that with 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 the permit, should the permit go to 10:00 to allow for that or should it go to 9:00 to to make it very clear that that's when the event stops and the music stops?
Well, I think that the posted hours for the event are till 9:00 o'clock on Friday and Saturday until 6:00 o'clock on Sunday. The alcohol serving time ends at 9:00 on Friday and Saturday and 6:00 on Sunday. I don't know what the history is for prior years in terms of whether there's two times. One, when the the event ends for the day and and the extra hour, I defer to the town manager. Council on that.
It was always 10 o'clock on Sunday and Sunday, but we figured that, you know, we're trying to scale it down this year a little bit just because, as I said, we really don't know. We're dealing with a new reality, so.
Yeah. So I think we're understood, Mr. Helmut, and Mr. Baboulis, you can confirm this, that the event will run until 9:00 o'clock on Friday and Saturday, but there will be time after it. It finishes, the music will be turned off and there'll be time for cleanup.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I do have a couple of questions. One is that we have had a couple of communications from the neighborhood. And I think part of this being a successful event is that it's successful for the neighborhood too, you know, understanding that there is a festival across the street from them. But my question for you, sir, is if one of those concerns that we have heard about has been some trash that have been, you know, leftover deposited from guests on the private property. My question is, what would be your plan for addressing that trash pickup and when that would happen each day?
Well, as soon as, I mean, we really don't, no one should be going across the street and deposit any trash. But if we, you know, if it comes to our destination, that something is there, we pick it up. We have a cleaning group cleaning constantly throughout the day. The facilities, the grounds, the neighborhood, you know, anything like that. And the Euro station that we usually is on that side of the street this year is going to be on the other side on our parking lot. So we really won't be that much activity on the street side.
Thank you. So if there if there is, well, will you ask your staff to look out for trash that would be across the street coming from that and then take care of it that night or the next morning?
Of course.
Thank you. I appreciate that commitment very much. And then, Mr. Chair, I would appreciate hearing from the town manager if that is his understanding just about the permitted hours. I think that it's important since the intent, and I think that the really, I really appreciate the organizers scaling back the hours and just going to 9:00. I think that's good, not only for music and things, but just try to keep, be cautious this year, right?
Yeah.
But I have a question for the town manager through the chair, if I may, if if that is sufficiently documented in the permit so that that would be something that the town could work with or organizers on and being a very clear understanding about when the music stops.
Mr. Chapdeline?
So I think if the chair was willing to entertain it, perhaps adding a clarified condition that music, music will end at 9:00 PM on Friday and Saturday nights so that potentially responding officers have a clear sentence in the permit to point to.
Kind of my my thought on this, you know, if that would be.
Okay. Yeah, I think we had that understanding with Mr. Baboulis and that's that's fine, Mr. Helmut. It's the rest of the boarding to go along with that. We can spell that out in the in the permit.
I'm different to my to my colleagues, but I think, you know, given that that's the expression ten and the understanding. You know, I think it might be, it might be helpful in just helping the neighborhood feel feel secure about this as too, because I think we all want this to be a good, positive event. And I'm excited about it.
Okay.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Helmut. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sort of piggybacking on my colleague, Mr. Helmut's and others' comments. What we've done traditionally in previous years is when we've issued the permit, we issued it to the hours that the event is ending and we don't add an extra hour. Technically, not technically, literally, it's private property. They can stay there till midnight cleaning up if they want. They don't need permission for that as well as their security plan for Friday and Saturday has police officers there till 9:00 o'clock and on Sunday until 6:00 o'clock. So that's when the event ends. So I would implore to my colleagues that we do what we've done in past years, that we issue the permit for Friday and Saturday from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM and Sunday from 12:00 to 6:00 PM. They don't need the permit to say an additional hour. And I live literally a block away and everyone who knows my family circumstances with the it's going to be a HE double hockey sticks weekend for me. So, but that's just because I have extreme family circumstances. So I'm like to do what we've done in past practices, which is they can stay there at 12:00 o'clock. They can stay there at 3:00 cleaning up. It's their private property. This is a permit for the event, for the traffic issues, closing off of streets, police presence. So if I could, I think Mr. Heard made the motion. I don't know if anybody seconded it, if they.
I'm still waiting for a sec.
Okay, I will second it, but I will ask Mr. Heard and my colleagues that the vote is to issue the permit Friday and Saturday, starting at 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Sunday, 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM in accordance with the security plan. Also with the caveat that they can stay there as long as they want to clean up this, that's their private property. And then my only other question would be, having lived near there, well, I live near there, not having. Who will be the authorized manager that will be on site? That if I I have an issue, it happens to me all the time. And if I don't have to leave my driveway, I don't complain about it. But I can't tell you how many times people, I live on Howard Street, which is right by, off of Quincy, right by the Odysseum. Who is the person that, maybe not so much for me, but if my neighbors have that situation, because unfortunately it does happen, that I could seek out that will be on site those three days? Or is it one or two different people?
So so it would be Elia, Elia Badihias, and also I'll be there all the time. You know, I'm the president. I'll be there every day, every minute, so they can reach out to both of us.
Okay, if you could just forward to the Select Board's office, to Ashley Maher or whoever you've been in contact with, your information and Leah's information. And that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Thank you for the the history there. That's what we're looking for on the times. And I just have a couple of comments and I know there's been a lot of discussions this year and partly because we didn't have the event last year. You, it's an unknown as to how many people you're going to have this year. The estimate is about a third of of what you had previously. And if it's nice weather, you might have a big crowd. So I think there were three things that that have been addressed between each in the town. One is the the food, the safety and preparation, and Chris is going to be the contact on that with the health department. We also, Officer Rato, I think, will be having additional discussions with you in terms of what the security plan is and whether a modification is needed if the crowds are larger. what the security plan is and whether a modification is needed if that the crowds are, are larger than expected. And then the third thing, and I didn't jump in when Mr. Diggins was talking, just on the neighbor issue, I did have a conversation with a member of the parish, and, and I think you're aware of this, Mr. Baboulis. Um, we're going to have a liaison prior to the event with the neighborhood, and that's going to be Mr. Feeny from the town. He's going to reach out to the neighbors. He's also going to reach out to the, to the church, and I think he'll start with you. It may be another member that you've assigned to be the neighborhood liaison, but, um, the communication is what's important here. And I think, I think we're in a good place on, on that now. We appreciate you working with us. And to Mrs. Mahan's point, if we can get the contact numbers um, into the select board office tomorrow, that would be great, because I, I don't mind that it's not on the application, um, because that becomes a public record. But if you can, um, contact the office tomorrow with those contact numbers, that would be great. And we hope you have great weather and, and that it's a successful event for everybody's.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Diggins, did you have a question?
Uh, we have, well, first an appreciation for what you, about the liaison and feel free to jump in any time, uh, if you can save, save us time. But also I just wanted to point out, uh, a typo, um, on the application, uh, for Saturday, it has June 2nd instead of June 12th. And for Sunday, it has June 3rd instead of June 13th. Not a big deal, but I just figured I'd point that out.
That was your usual, I guess, yeah, okay.
Oh, that's. This got pushed back a week, so I think that may, uh, may happen. Okay, I, I think that's it from the board. So we have a motion by Mr. Heard and seconded by Mrs. Mahan, um, for approval of the three items requested. Attorney Heim.
Mr. Heard.
Yep. And I'll just mention that I'll amend my motion as described by Mrs. Mahan. Sec, uh, yes.
As amended, uh, Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes, as amended.
Mrs. Amman?
Mrs. Mahan?
Um, yes, and I thank Mr. Heard for that, uh, agreement to the friendly amendment.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Janice Foe?
Great. Thank you very much and good luck with the event.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Hope to see you over at the festival.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I, I'm just, given the time, we, it's seven thirty-two and we had put item twelve at the end of the agenda. I don't think we're going to get to twelve. I think the Mr. Amstutz may have been notified that that may be the case. So if anybody is here to, um, to, to, to see item twelve, um, it looks like we're going to, we will, I'll look for a motion to table that when we get to it. Um, I just don't want you to hang on for the rest of the meeting, because I, I don't see us being able to have time to, um, to get to that. So I'm going to move to the consent agenda at this point. There's a number of items on it. Um, item four is the minutes of meetings, May 3rd, 2021, May 10, 2021, May 19th, 2021. Item five is a request for temporary parking restrictions at 23 Maple Street. Item six is a request for the Arlington High School Ice Cream fundraiser for Dana Faber Cancer Institute, uh, for June 19th, 2020, at the Jefferson Cutter House Lawn. Item seven is a request for a contractor drain layer license for Kevin Aruda, KB Aruda Construction. Item eight is a request for a contractor drain layer license for Dennis LaHorn and CCL Enterprises. Um, this big night for contractor drain or license, drain layer license, licenses. Number nine is a request for a contractor drain layer license for Peter Sharon, New England Construction Managers, Inc. Uh, Mr. Diggins on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Uh, Mr. Helmut?
I think you have seconded that.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Mahan, any questions, comments?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, um, when I saw the, uh, report by DPW Director Mike Radamacher, I'd like to ask if, uh, the chair and the town manager could, um, work towards hopefully maybe one of the June meetings. Um, I know we're, uh, closing off Grove Street, but we still have our DPW vehicles, DPW employee vehicles and DPW employees down there. If the board could get sort of a, a matrix graph of what work is going to occur, occur when. Um, and I know right now, uh, it's my understanding that we're shifting deep, that they're still down there. I think right now roll call and socially distance, uh, gap, not socially, I mean, work distance gatherings, I, I think are occurring in the paint shop. And I'd like someone to address, whether it's Mr. Radamacher or the facilities director, when we do get into the hazardous material portion and there's possible exposure to that, um, what plans we have. I'm assuming employees shouldn't be near that for whatever limited time that happens. So if, um, Ms. De Corsi, uh, and thank you for giving me this leniency, perhaps in a June, one of the June meetings, we could get a report on that, uh, a matrix of what work's going to be done. Where are DPW employees who remain down there and are going to be shifted around, which I understand, as well as town and school employees that go to the gas pumps. But I anticipate, and I could be wrong, there might be a period of time that nobody should be down there when we're dealing with the hazardous materials. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Chaplin, I, just on that request, I don't know if we could do that in June, if you see any issues with.
So, yeah, there, there is a very strict health and safety plan in place as developed by the architects uh, and a general contractor who will be managing the site along with, uh, Mike Radamacher. Uh, that said, I think we can absolutely prepare a memorandum and a matrix for provision to the board at a future meeting. Sure.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Heard?
No comments.
Okay. And just before we take the vote, uh, Mr. Chaplin, is anybody, um, on any of the consent agenda, agenda items with us tonight? I don't know if anybody wanted to speak to any of these. I'm thinking the fundraiser, there may be someone here, but for the ice cream.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I was in contact, um, having places on the agenda and actually advise them. They didn't, they didn't need to, to be here, but, uh, they've been in touch with me and, um, you know, I have, have worked with the health department to work, you know, work out a, a COVID safe, uh, appropriate plan. And, you know, I'm real excited that they're able to bring back the, this scoop mania fundraiser this year in town. And I, I'm looking forward to the ice cream.
Great. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Okay, so on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmut for approval of the consent agenda, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Janice Foe?
Thank you. Uh, item 10 licenses and permits for approval, class two license. Edward Gukasov Broadway Motoring for Dudley Street Place. Um, is he here with us tonight?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, and I just promoted him. He should be joining meetings.
And I'm, I'm sorry if I said the name wrong. Um, if, if you can say your name for the board and, and just tell us about the, uh, the license request.
Um, my name is Edward Gukasov. I'm applying for class two used car dealer license under Broadway Motoring.
I understand you were in Arlington previously and you're moving to a new address. Is that, is that correct?
Yes. I was in Arlington from 2007 till 2017.
Great. Okay. Um, all right. I will turn it over to the board. Mr. Helmut?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Like to move approval. Uh, and just one question for applicant. Can you just give us an idea of the kind of work that you do?
I basically sell used cars. Uh, we buy through auctions, um, lease companies and other places and resell them, service and resell them. I've been doing that for many years right now.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, we wish you.
Thank you.
No further.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll second that. And I, I just have one question. Um, I, I go through the materials submitted, so I apologize if it's in there, but, um, if the, uh, requesting person, uh, how many, either approximately or as close to exactly, um, how many vehicles do you anticipate being on your lot for sale at one time? Do you have a max or?
That's my question. Basically, this lot will allow probably storing about, uh, I think my, uh, severe engineer draw at parking lot for 11 display units and five customers. So it would be probably about, uh, 11, 12, 13, depends if some cars sold, we'll keep them on the lot until they picked up. So it could be about 15, 16 cars all the time on the lot.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Mahan, I'm Mr. Heard.
Uh, Mr. Helmut took care of my one question. This was the first time I read a application and I was not sure what the business was, but congratulations and, uh, good luck with the business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, thank you, uh, for, for returning to Arlington and, and, uh, you can give us a short answer. Feel free to flatter us, uh, what made you decide to come back?
Well, I was in Arlington and I knew almost everyone back then in Arlington. It was a pleasure to work there, everyone from town, neighbors. And then after 10 years, um, I had to unfortunately leave Arlington. I moved to North Chelmsford, stayed there for a few years. And last year, because of the pandemic hit our country, landlords had to sell the building and I had to move out. So I started to be on the lookout and I always looked into Arlington. And luckily for me, enterprise rental car space became available at the right time.
Great. Well, once again, welcome back and thanks for coming back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. I also echo my, my colleagues. I wish you the best of luck coming back to Arlington and, uh, I, I hope you have a long time there at, at that site on Dudley Street. Um, so we have a, a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mrs. Mahan for approval. Attorney?
To Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Janice Foe?
Best of luck.
Great. Thank you so much.
Next item is item 11 for approval, closing on 1207 Mass Avenue Real Estate Authorization. Um, in memorandum of understanding for public space, uh, Attorney Heim, if you could pick up where we left off, uh, last week and maybe, um, just, just summarize the, to the board, what was before us and, and what's happened since.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The short version is that this is, um, seeking the board's authorization execution of a quick claim deed. I apologize. I realize, uh, this has been moved around a little bit, but basically all we need to do is execute the reclaim deed. We're not going to, um, address the, um, the memorandum of understanding anymore. I think it was just, uh, recycled from the last meeting as an agenda item. But, uh, we've, uh, responsive to the board's comments, uh, the parties are in agreement that will pursue and, uh, development of an easement that will basically fit all the conditions set forth in the special permit that I provided as reference for the board. And then I basically, uh, provided you a memo walking through each one of the board's sort of questions and concerns. Uh, chief among them, the, uh, buyer agrees that both the special permit fees uh, and the building permit fees to be waived will be halved consistent with, uh, the expectations of the board in the discussion last time. We also confirmed, um, some of the just technical pieces of the quick claim deed, that the, uh, initials on the deed are, are initials on the documents are, uh, Mr. Dougherty's initials, that there are no seller's costs, because, uh, you don't face any costs for legal counsel, because you have internal counsel, you don't face any costs for stamps, because municipality is exempt from those, um, costs. And that there's no anticipated other costs, because both the town and the buyer did a, uh, title search and we're not anticipating any um, objections, um, to the, uh, to the deed. So, uh, long and short of it is unless the board wants to talk anymore, I hope that my memo addressed, uh, some of the concerns and, and perspectives and questions that I think the board rightly raised last time. Uh, and that we're good to go just for the purposes of executing a quick claim deed and closing. We will not, um, uh, uh, resolve or actions to resolve. We won't, uh, we'll bring back an easement in front of the board. That would have to go to town meeting anyway. So I'll have to wait for a, a town meeting warrant. Um, but I'll obviously be working with the relevant parties to develop the language of the easement. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Heim. Uh, okay, I'll turn it to the board. Mr. Heard?
Thank you, and thank you to Attorney Heim for the report. Um, and, you know, I appreciate your work on this and Attorney O'Connor's work on this, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Dougherty being willing to come to our side of the, of the issue as far as special permit fees, and I appreciate his efforts on this. You know, I, I think from start to finish, he's, he's had a good faith effort in regards to this project. And just like any building project in town, I know it's not going to be to everyone's standards, but I think it's a re- really exciting project for the town. It's going to breathe new life into a block that's really been depressed for a while in a particular space that has, um, so, you know, I'm happy to move approval on this.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Mr. Diggins?
And I will second it in, since some, since we do have just a wee bit of time. Uh, I, I understand, you know, I understand there's an agreement for the, um, the permit fees. Uh, I'm just being a little dense here. Be, so, so can you just explain to me why it's halved? We, just so that if I have to repeat to someone, I can explain it?
Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Diggins, when the board issued an RFP to try to basically generate interest in the 1207 parcel, which is a basically a one-story building with no real parking, one of the things that we wanted was, uh, to try to get an agreement to accept a mixed use deed restriction. And one of the incentives for that was the waiver of building and special permit fees. When the bid came back, the only bid that came back was for a co-development of both 1207 Mass Ave and the adjoining parcel 1211 Mass Ave. The board only owns 1207 Mass Ave and it's selling 1207 Mass Ave. So, um, I think during the ARB process, a number of folks raised the sense that, well, why would we waive the building permit fees for a project that scope exceeds just 1207, which is the only parcel that the town owns? So because it's being, uh, I'm sorry, not building permit fees, special permit fees during the ARB process. So because, um, it's the development of basically two, you know, abiding parcels, the, uh, compromise that was, uh, reached at the ARB would, was that, you know, you only waive half of the special permit fees, because half of the lot is, that's being, half of the project that's being developed is not owned by the town and isn't being transferred by the town. Similar logic applies to the building permit fees, although it's a little bit more, uh, clearer in terms of the contract, the PNS. We're only conveying the premises and we're only agreeing to waive building permit fees for the premises. Uh, the project, however, spans two premises. So that's why we're waiving half. Um, any other calculations than that get kind of, um, quickly complicated and crazy, because, you know, you start to look at, you know, what portion of a building is in what lot, when you're talking about one development, uh, starts to become pretty unwieldy pretty fast. So that's, that's the rationale for it.
Thanks. Yeah, there's a beginning part of it that I hadn't really absorbed, that we initially, you know, uh, waived those fees in order to provide an incentive. So, yeah, sometimes it takes a few times for it to get through to me. I appreciate your patience. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mrs. Mahan?
Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Attorney Heim, for clarifying that. And, um, one of the other questions I got, and I, Vice Chair spoke with the chairman earlier today, um, regarding what the select board would do, we got the open space, um, piece of this. And if the chairman would indulge me, because he's going to say it more succinctly, um, and eloquently, especially since you're an attorney in municipal law. Um, if you could just, um, not just for our colleagues, but, um, people who have raised this question to myself and others on the board regarding the open space que- question, when it really comes into play for a decision and what bodies are bodies ultimately, um, are sort of the decision makers, um, on that. And we, we had discussed this today, and if I try to explain, it's going to take eight minutes, and I think the chair can probably do it way less than that.
Okay, I, I'll start, Attorney Heim, I may turn to you on this. I don't know how eloquent I will be. But on the, the, oh, the open space issue goes to the density bonus that's contained in the zoning bylaw. And the zoning bylaw contains language that if there's a deed, a grant or, or an easement, there, there can be a density bonus that is granted. That's a determination that's within the zoning bylaw. That's the reason why the, the license that was initially proposed is not before us anymore. I think it's going to be the easement route, as, as Attorney Heim said, and, and an easement would require the approval of town meeting. So if there's anything I missed there, Attorney Heim, that you want to add, um, feel free.
The only thing that I would add, Mr. Chair, is that the body that is deciding how to interpret the zoning bylaw is.
The only thing that I would add, Mr. Chair, is that the body that is deciding how to interpret the zoning bylaw is the ARB. So they were the ones that decided that this bonus and this easement was attractive and useful and should be applied to this project under the criteria of environment and design review. It's not the first time that this type of thing has happened. It's not. We don't have a lot of large-scale EDR projects like this, but we've granted similar bonuses and modifications for basically public space improvements and offerings before as well. So this board is in charge with adjudicating whether or not that's the appropriate application of the bonus or it's not. Nor is it charged with deciding whether or not this is ultimately something that should have been in the special permit and how they should have approached that. So from that sense, that's already been decided by the ARB. Ultimately, any easement has to be accepted by town meeting. So that's the sum of it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to point out where I've gotten questions about why the select board and when is there point in the process to make a vote on this? It's it's not something under our purview. It's ultimately town meeting on a recommendation by the Arlington redevelopment board. If for some reason, which we've started doing the past two or three years, sometimes select board articles, the redevelopment board weighs in, and sometimes redevelopment board, the select board does, but that's really not under our bellywink. It's ARB and then ultimately town meeting. So thank you, Attorney Heim and Attorney De Corsi, Mr. Chairman, for explaining that. All done.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. And I would just briefly, if I could, I see Attorney O'Connor is is with us tonight, and I want to thank her. But also, we had the meeting last week, and I'm pleased that everything was was taken care of in the in the intervening week. And I just want to, if she could join us for a second, just to confirm, and also just let us know her estimate as to when we think we will be closing on this once once we issue the final approval. Attorney O'Connor, if you're with us.
Yes, good evening to all of you. I confirm what Attorney Heim has told you, work these issues out. I just want to point out that the issue with respect to giving the town a license versus an easement was a collaborative thing. It was not my client's decision to do that. We thought that was the better route to go, but he doesn't care if it's an easement. I do think that the ARB, the planning office, will be the the group that's charged with administering that space time-wise, use-wise, and things like that. The MOU does say what it cannot be used for. And, you know, one of the factors was they didn't want this to be something every day so that the neighbors weren't bothered by something happening there every day. It can be open public space, but something organized. I think it's twice a week the MOU calls for. But it's my understanding that planning will administer this.
Okay.
I want to thank Attorney Heim for all of his help with this as well.
Okay, thank, thank you, Attorney O'Connor, and I appreciate you coming back tonight. I didn't have any other questions. I want to thank Attorney Heim for addressing the issue on the allocation of the the building permit fees, because I think that question came up to to a number of us. And aside from the difficulties of trying to parse out what's on either lot, I will also point out that the 1211 Mass Ave lot, there's a lot more open called unimproved. The unimproved portion of 1211 is greater than what the unimproved portion of 1207 is. And that's a further difficulty in terms of parsing out what a building permit allocation would be. So this is a convention that that was used. It's consistent with what was done with the special permit fees. And I think, given the complexities and the fact that you don't have the same building on each parcel, you don't have the same lot coverage, it was a a point of negotiation or discussion, and and I think we're we're comfortable with that. So thank you. And and before we get to the vote, I will say we're going to close tonight. We started tonight with Mr. Barr, whose son had won a soapbox derby. I believe Mr. Dougherty's son won the soapbox derby in Arlington in 2009. So there's a little closure on the issue this evening. So we have a.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Yes. I did have a question. I'm not sure I was was called on.
Go right ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Helmut, you were not called on, and I did that again. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, no. Yeah, thanks to my colleagues for clarifying all all my questions except one. I just wanted to double check that because town meeting has to approve the easement, does that mean that the the owner would not be able to exercise the density bonus until telling such time that an easement would be would be approved? You know, is that the effect, the effect of that?
Attorney Heim.
I think the the most reasonable way to interpret, Mr. Helmut, is that the easement is a condition. It's one of the special permit conditions. It's not gonna, it's not relative relevant necessarily to construction, but it's definitely has to be done, you know, in order to basically operate. So, you know, I think I think everybody's got an interest in having this easement be addressed at whatever next town meeting we have. But that's, I think, the the most concise way I can answer with given the time that we have.
Okay, yeah, thank you. No, that I appreciate the clarification and no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Right, and I'm sorry about that, Mr. Helmut. I started talking, I lost track. I was thinking of soapbox derby, so. Yeah, exactly. So on a motion by Mr. Heard, seconded by Mr. Diggins for approval on the deed, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Helen.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Janice, vote.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Okay, so item 12, if if we could take a a motion to table that until our next meeting. Thank you, do a second.
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 Great, thank you. So a motion's been made and seconded to the table, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Helmut. Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Janice.
Thank you. Okay, next item is correspondence received, Lowell Lowell Street parking concerns.
Move receipt.
The second.
Second.
Great, any questions, comments from the other members?
Mr. Chaplin, should we refer this to the Parking Advisory Committee?
So I I took a quick look, and I I think maybe as an initial step, we could ask Officer Ratao to take a look at the history and potentially answer the question of the resident. And then if if it goes deeper than what he can find, then we can go to the Parking Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chaplin. So on a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mrs. Mr. Diggins to receive the the Lowell Street Parking Concerns letter, Attorney.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
The helmet.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
De Corsi.
Yes.
Janice, vote.
Thank you, Attorney Heim. And last item, new business, Attorney Heim.
Very briefly, I'll be issuing the board some guidance based on whether or not the governor's bill allows us to extend remote meetings until September 1. I know that a lot of folks have been asking about it to any recent reason. Thank you.
Your attorney, hi, Mr. Chaplin.
Given the time, no new business tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaplin, Mr. Helmut.
No new business.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins.
And for me.
Mr. Heard.
Nope.
Mrs. Mahan.
My new business can wait, and if it's appropriate after you, if you have any new business, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, I have no new business, and I will turn to you for the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend our meeting and re-adjourn concurrent with the regular town meeting, that the select board will remain in session and will adjourn concurrent with the regular town meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. So we have a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Heard, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Heard.
What amazing timing, yes.
Yes.
Helmut.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Bless you, Mr. De Corsi, you're on in 47 seconds, yes.
Mrs. De Corsi.
Yes.
Janice, vote.
All right, thank you very much, everyone.
See you soon.
Not see you all in a few seconds.